This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Alright, welcome to the City Council Ordnance Committee meeting November 22nd and it is 5:05. Councilor Riley and myself are present and we do have some minutes to approve, so I'm gonna allow Councilor Riley to make those motions. And I think, are they three separate motions or?
Ah, yes, we're gonna do three separate motions.
Perfect, let's do that.
Alright, so first I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve meeting minutes for August 4th and September 20th, 2022.
Okay, I'll second that. And all those in favor? Aye. Okay, motion passes.
Okay, and then I'd like to make a motion to approve meeting minutes for October 4th, 2022.
Okay, I'll second that. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. And last one.
Alright, and then, so these are some outstanding meeting minutes from Councilor Rothschild before she resigned from City Council. I was not at that meeting. Councilor Gomez was here for the meetings in question, so...
Perfect.
If you would like to make a motion, it's March 22nd, March 29th, May 9th.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the aforementioned minutes to be approved. And... Okay, alright, we have a second. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have two voted members in favor, motion passes. Thank you very much, Councilor Riley. That brings us to public speak time. If anybody's here to speak on anything other than what's on the agenda, which it doesn't seem like that would be the case, now is the time. Seeing none, let's move right into what we're trying to get done here, which is... Drumroll, the vacant storefront ordinance, yes. So, um... So, and I imagine everybody's taken a look at the revisions that the committee has put forward. And, and I know, basically, one of the last things that was holding us from moving forward was making sure the enforcement agent that was identified in the original ordinance was on board, knew what was going on, that we were able to get some feedback, that we were able to get some, you know, real world information on how this is gonna play out. And so that's why we're here. And, you know, before we dig too far, before we have, you know, we kind of lay out what our vision is and BJ can kind of chime in and see how that could potentially work, I know that Jeff hasn't had an opportunity to really weigh in yet, so Jeff, I see you have a printed out copy with some notes. And, and I feel like it would be important to get your take on this, as well as the EDIC members who originally put this forward. And again, I will apologize for the delay that this has kind of undergone. It's been an interesting time since this was submitted for us, so our apologies on that. So Jeff, do you have any thoughts? Do you wanna put out there?
Uh, sure, thank you. I will shift it to BJ, because I think that's the more important part.
Yep.
I attended the last EDIC meeting and I think one of the other questions that, it's kind of the mechanics of how this will work, was a little bit, I think we need a little bit more clarity on how do we determine when a storefront becomes vacant?
Yes.
And I think we could do it by any kind of reporting to any city official really that's involved. And then I, I didn't, I mean, this is just a thought, but upon receipt of like the idea that something has become vacant, we could use kind of a certified mail process where the city then sends something by certified mail just to start the clock ticking, because my read of this is like the first three months are fine, and totally normal expected that if you become vacant, you need some period of time and we just wanted to come up with a mechanism to start the clock ticking. So certified mail is usually kind of like the best legally defensible way to put a property owner on notice that we've identified that your property is vacant. That kind of segues into the next, you know, quite a series of questions that we had. Building Commissioner, in terms of your review of this and understanding of any questions, concerns. And that is my segue back to Building Commissioner. We haven't, I don't know if you guys have heard from her or I, so...
So we did get some, some written feedback, which, thank you for that. And, and we tried to reflect some of those comments in the last updated version. You know, I think one of, from our perspective, one of the things that we were getting stuck on a little bit as it related to enforcement was, you know, number one, when, when a property is vacant, how do we determine that? So that was Jeff, that was right, like how do we determine if, when a property is vacant? Number two, how do we determine the owner? Is there like a listing somewhere? Because I know that some properties are held in trust, or they're held by LLCs or something, so we wanted to make sure we were gonna be able to get like the, the right person. And, you know, I'm trying to think, there were some other things that we... Now my brain is not functioning because I'm not used to being out in the real world here.
I think you also wanted to be thoughtful about where are you gonna get the information that it's vacant in the first place?
Right.
Who is responsible for figuring that out, where you're gonna source that? Because we're not gonna just like task a person to drive around town and actually notice things all day long.
Right, yeah, that is definitely a factor. I mean, you know, who's gonna say when it is? I mean, and, yeah, having proper contact is always an issue.
Absolutely. And Gwen, that was a great segue because you reminded me of what I was thinking. So I think that probably, and Jeff, you kind of touched on this a little bit, the idea of this being complaint driven.
Right.
So anybody could go to the building, the building commissioner, the planner, the mayor, and say, "Hey, this property's been sitting there forever." That could potentially then get funneled to a contact person, potentially in the building commissioner's office that sends that certified letter. But the other thing is the idea of the registry. And so that was one of the areas that we got a little bit hung up on, like, okay, so what does the registry look like? Who maintains the registry? And basically, you know, Tom is our data guy. And, and he's like, listen, this could be a Google spreadsheet, like super simple, and there's a way that you can embed that in the city website. Because really, one of the, one of the biggest, and I think you guys from EDIC would agree, that one of the biggest reasons to do this, other than to incentivize getting those properties filled, is to kind of share the fact that these properties are vacant and, "Come to East Hampton, we've got some vacant properties."
Yeah, exactly.
Right? So having it as like a clearinghouse, I think is one of those important things. Tom seemed to think that that data entry could be super easy, it could be in a Google spreadsheet and it could go directly onto the website.
Part agree.
So, you know, I, I think the, where we got stuck with that was, okay, who does that?
Right.
Right? And so, and BJ, I think this is where potentially we get your input. One of the thoughts that came from our committee, because we went, we literally went all over. We went to, we're like, oh, the city clerk issues, you know, business certificates. And she's like, well, half the people in town don't have business certificates. I was like, oh great, that's another thing we have to look at apparently. But, um, so, and she felt like that didn't fit for her office and, you know, it kind of circled us back to the building commissioner office. And one of the things that was mentioned is an administrative assistant. This, this could be a potential, for an administrative assistant, this could be a very small responsibility that probably wouldn't take up very much time at all. So, um, just throwing it out there, because, I mean, so here's our, here's our reality, I guess. Like if we go to Main Street, what we have is we have like an insane amount of vacant storefronts. So, and I think that what, if, as this, when this passes, as it got pushed to the appropriate department, it would probably be a complete clearinghouse already. A database that's already set up with all the vacant storefronts, so there wouldn't have to be like legwork done by the department. It would just be, okay, here is what we have, let's make sure the letters get sent out, what date are they sent out on? And let's see what kind of like receipts we get, feedback we get. So, that's kind of, that's kind of where we are. Let's, let's hear, let's hear some thoughts.
I just don't think it's realistic. You have one building commissioner for 16,000 people. I've got one administrative assistant. We are already not doing what's required by the building code in this department right now. Not in this first year that I've taken it over.
Okay.
To add something else to it seems undaunting to me right now. If, if, if I could simply show you the number of inspections that haven't been done that are required by code for annual inspections of businesses.
Sure.
So I'm not saying that trying to get out of it, I'm just saying, I, I don't know. I've been here since 5:00 AM this morning, that's normally, my normal days.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and I'm not complaining, I'm just stating facts.
No, no, this is important, this is what we need to hear, honestly.
Clearly, I, I mean, obviously I do other municipalities and I, I see this throughout the Commonwealth, these storefronts, buildings being empty and, and I can see it's an issue, but wow. You know, trying to determine when they're empty, who's involved, even, you know... Yes, you say it's simple to put together a spreadsheet and to keep that updated, but someone's gotta do that.
Yeah, totally.
So here's my, so what is the hourly commitment of the administrative assistant at this moment?
Well, I only had one for, I think, part-time when I took over. And of course, I just jumped up and down and said, that's not gonna work. So I do have her full-time now.
You do have her full-time?
Right.
Um, because, you know, one of the, one of the things that we, and I think this came from the EDIC, but in the beginning of the ordinance, basically what we say, what this for, what the fee is for, because each vacant storefront, we upped it to 500.
Great.
And so the new fees are 500 for the first year and 750 the second year, and 1,000 the third year in consecutive years after that. Which is more in line with some other municipalities that do this. Because basically, the way that we looked at it in committee, once we started digging into this, like $100, we're like, people are gonna be like, who cares?
Fair enough.
And so we thought that 500, 750 and 1,000 was enough to at least pique people's attention. And then what we explicitly say at the beginning of the ordinance is, let me see if I can find it. "The monies raised by fees set forth in this ordinance will be used to provide an online registry of vacant properties in East Hampton that will be updated as needed to reflect current vacancies, as well as enforcement of the provisions set forth herein." So, basically what we, what we do there is we earmark the money for the department that enforces it. So there, there would be an incentive for the department that does this and potential resource to hire a part-time person, to have, you know, maybe that just comes in a couple of days a week to do this. So we kind of were trying to mitigate the issue that we knew was there. I mean, we knew that it was, that you were, you know, treading water and that your department is, is...
I mean, every day gets better.
That's good.
I really believe that, I'm gonna keep believing that. You know, have you already got a baseline of, of, what do I mean? Of what the storefronts are now?
Yes.
Do you already have like a start on that? I mean, I wouldn't be, I mean, recreate it from scratch.
Nope, so what I, what I would say is, when this passed, what the department that would be enforcing this would get is a completed database.
Okay.
And it would, that would just need to be updated as like storefronts became filled.
Okay.
And you also have to remember, it's a very small catch basin. We're talking about Main Street, Union Street and Cotton Street. It's just downtown business, Main Street facing...
Not like Pleasant and...
Right.
Nope.
We, we were really thoughtful about that because that just starts seeming like...
Because I'm just like, oh my god, I'm just, I'm just gonna quit now.
Exactly. Yeah, it's not, it's not highway business, it's not...
Right. It's the high-traffic areas that we're also trying to keep, just, these are the places that people know about most in our city. They are the thoroughfares that they, they get them from place, from other towns and through our, our main hotspots. And so we wanna keep those places as revital, as vital. Let us revitalize them, so they remain vital.
Right.
So it's, it is a limited geography, which is...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's...
I'll, I'll take a breather.
Yeah. I, I think that is an important point, because it does, I mean, really, it makes it as easy as like taking a walk during lunch. You literally could cover every single one.
Well, I'm, I'm down there. I mean, that's the annual inspections that I do.
Right.
You know, so they really work hand in hand, because I would know.
Right.
When, I mean, this is just my first year.
Yeah.
So I am half committee myself, and everyone in town, at the business, city, the businesses, know who I am too. And some are not as happy with me, but, you know, I, yeah, I mean, it, obviously anything can be done.
Right.
You know, if I've got somewhere to start from, having to recreate the will, which is what I'm sort of doing in the building department right now.
No, that would sound fair.
You know, seem, that's why I said it seemed a little undaunting, but to have something to work with. I do have a new person, because Zoe moved on, I'm missing her terribly, but my new person is definitely picking up the pace and, you know, this won't happen tomorrow, right?
No, 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 this would be, this would be a little, so, you know, timeline wise, we'd need to, there's a couple of other things we just need to sort out. And then it would go to a public hearing at the full council, you know, so it probably...
Sometime next year.
Next year. We'd have to send it to the city attorney. So, you know, it's probably, we're probably looking at, like, if we said tonight, hey, we're good with everything the way it is here, I would say it would probably be a couple of months. And then, and then, um, I would, I would feel confident saying that we could start this with a completed database that is linked to the website, so it would show on the City of East Hampton website...
All the storefronts.
All the storefronts that are vacant.
Yep.
I'm confident that we could get it that way. Yeah.
So...
With movement, if people move out.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Right. Well, I feel good about where we are now and want to go back to the question about the, the idea of how you get that information in the first place.
Yeah.
Who is providing it? And I'm interested in what it really means, the idea of being complaint driven. That assumes that people know that they should be saying something to someone about, "I've noticed this." Because as we've said, like, nobody's volunteering to like walk up and down all three of these streets every single day and go, "And you, uh-huh, and you, uh-huh." So what, how do we do that?
Well, that's, and you know what that's driven by. Look, as a building commissioner, I could drive around this city and see all kinds of things.
Yeah.
But I can't say for hypothetically, I see a house that has something wrong. I'm gonna have to do that with every house in the City of East Hampton, because someone could say, "You're picking on me."
Right, right, right.
Right? That's the same thing with this. We have to be consistent across the board with everyone. Otherwise, you know, we, we, we could get caught in that, being accused of that.
Right.
And so that's why, like with zoning, I need a written complaint. Not you leaving anonymous call on the phone.
Right.
Not you coming into my office saying, "Hey, you know, no, write it on paper, put your name on it, stand up here and say you're complaining about this." Because then I could say, "I acted on a written complaint,"
Right.
which is what my job is.
Yeah.
So, is there a supplemental way to do that, such that a landlord or property owner could themselves just say, "Hey, this is what this is, this is vacant"? Does that have to be... Like sure, they could fill out a complaint and complain about themselves.
Yeah.
But is that really the same idea?
Right. No, you could direct them that, "If you're gonna be empty for this period of time, please call the building department and update the status on, on what that means. I'm gonna be empty, but I'm currently looking for someone to take the space," or... They can, they don't have to write, it's not a complaint at that point. They're just updating us on the status of where they're at. That's what our lieutenant does.
Okay, so there's like an element of a, not just business community, but the rest of the community education piece, like, "Hey, this is a thing we care about and here's the things that we're trying to do about it. Here's the catchment area, these streets, let's focus on that and here are some ways you can help us do that work."
And the way that you set it up, by saying, "Look, here's the streets we have,"
Yeah.
and you're doing it across the board, on these streets that have businesses in these thoroughfares. And so that lays it out, that we're doing it evenly across the board. And that's the only, in my 18 years, that's representation that you wanna have, is that we're doing it fairly.
Yeah.
That we're not singling anyone out, we're, we're saying, across the board, if you've got a storefront that is empty on this, we need, we're following this ordinance and this is what we do, what this entails.
And that brings up a couple of thoughts, just, I think the website could be its own page, on the East Hampton page, that could explain the whole thing. And could even have a little form for a complaint.
Updating our complaint.
Yeah, to update our complaint, or to appeal.
Yeah.
And that could be, so that could be right on its own page. And I think another, you know, we have some really great kind of committees within the city, like the EDIC, which could also be another avenue of, I mean, I think the EDIC is actually a really great, if we're looking at vacant storefronts, obviously you guys brought this forward. That would be another place that could be a conduit for saying, "Hey, we've noticed like, there's like three more vacant storefronts on Cotton Street, like, oh, we should make, like, let's make sure we put that forward." So it could just be kind of like an ongoing, and as new people come on, mentoring them to let them know that this is one of the, you know, we have this ordinance and this is important for the vitality of the city, and pass it down generationally. As, I mean, not that it has to be, you know, a hard, fast responsibility of the EDIC, but it's just another set of eyes out there that could potentially help, you know, the implementation of this. Jeff?
You touched on it all. I think, I think the EDIC actually plays a good role. It's not uncommon for people like the members of the EDIC to be like, "Oh, did you see that some such and such closed?"
Right.
Like, and we're talking on a really small geographic area, so it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty obvious when something becomes vacant.
Yeah.
So if the EDIC members are boots on the ground and can report that, or the owners who are more willing to work with us will be self-reporting, right? So I think those are good things. The one thing I wanted to, I guess, just put out there and say about the fees.
Yeah.
I think just being modest with how much fee we'll actually collect over time, because, you know, I think, I think it would be tough to support a position.
I agree.
Because I think the way we structured it is that the fees are the stick and there's like two carrots before that, which is that they could get an exemption from the fees if they agree to put up some kind of like, all the sparks way, just something to beautify the front. Or they could get waivers for any kind of real economic hardship. So we would, we really expect people to, once they learn of this, they'll probably pursue those.
Absolutely.
So this is really more of a mechanism to, it's not that you're saying, look, because we all understand there's a time when storefronts may be empty, because someone's moved out and they haven't gotten someone yet. So this is more of a mechanism to try to say, but let's keep that storefront presentable until you bring it in. And not a necessary mechanism to punish or...
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we discussed that a lot.
It's a way to avoid the, the so prominent derelict property situations that we've had in our main thoroughfares.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and with all the growth you've got going on here, I mean, it is in prime time, because, I mean, you're, you know, with Ferry Street and North Hampton's coming up around the corner, you've got a lot of people, potentially who are gonna be coming into this, I mean, the city's been growing for some time.
For some time now, yeah. Right.
Um, yeah, so this was an idea that I had. I haven't followed up with anybody yet. I, I assume that this would be doable, but to mitigate the cost of having one of those volunteers or an employee is, you know, the Councilor Kozinski, you know, helped create the Senior Tax Write-Off Program with the Council on Aging, so that maybe there is a possibility for a resident in East Hampton who could apply for that program and carry out the administrative duties. And instead of receiving like a...
We love that idea.
Yeah.
You can tell.
Excellent.
That's a great idea.
Right, it's a part of the work off, right.
Yeah.
They can maintain the database and then, you know, either tell me, you know, the building department, "Hey, we need some enforcement here because nothing's happening yet."
I think that's, that's a great idea. And it doesn't necessarily have to be, it doesn't, it's, we don't have to write that into the ordinance, but I think that that is one of those, those threads that we connect from A to B.
The administrative part, I mean, I don't think, yeah, I don't think it has to be mentioned in the ordinance, but it's...
But it's an important piece of how this could potentially play out. And so I think, I mean, I think this is great and I think, you know, this puts us on a, on a positive track to, to help make this happen. There were just a couple of other things that I wanted to just put out there before, you know, and I would love to have Tom take a look at this, but, you know, honestly, we've sat on this for so long, I'm ready, once it's ready, to, to move it forward. But Jeff, before I talk about the couple of little things that I had, do you have anything else? Because I know that you did go through this and I value your feedback.
Thank you. Though, I think while, while the building commissioner's here, I do wanna make sure, I guess, that we saw that there is an inspection... Section? So there is an inspection expected. Right now, I think the language was periodically, well, they're periodically inspect the exterior, then it says it and interior. I mean, you building subjects is ordered to compliance. It refers to a registration form, so that would be something we would wanna work, work on.
Yep.
And most businesses have to be, have to be inspected annually depending on the use. So most of those buildings, most likely, myself and the fire have both inspected.
Right.
Because it's already, I mean, it's already in the state building code and the state fire code.
Sure.
For businesses.
Is that about an operational business or the building itself that the business operates in?
Both.
Oh, okay, cool.
And so let me just read this, because I think, so this is, "The building commissioner, police chief, fire chief and the health director or their designee shall have the authority..." So this is basically granting authority to periodically inspect the exterior and interior of any building subject to this ordinance for compliance as authorized under the terms of registration of the, of regis, of the, I gotta hold on, the registration form filed with the city. "The building commissioner shall have the discretionary authority to disconnect utilities immediately if a potential hazard that may be dangerous to life and limb is present. Vacant properties are subject to quarterly inspections to ensure the property continues to meet applicable, applicable building codes required for leasing. The building commissioner may levy a fee for this inspection."
How does that really sound? How does that, does that feel meaningful, reasonable? What does that...
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the, the one can inspections required by the state building code are annually, depending on the use, like the use group, like a business group is yearly. Like churches are done every five years because they have, you know, just religious exemptions. You know, like what we're doing now, we do the liquor licenses annually, because they, you know, that's when we go into the businesses and some of those in this corridor that you're, that you have in this ordinance. So quarterly, annually.
Yep. And, and I think the intent of that is to make sure that you have the authority. Like say if we see a building, like windows are broken, potentially some sort of activity, like kind of... What I think of is Ferry Street before Ferry Street started getting rehabbed. You know, it was, it was a disaster.
Right.
And because people were going in there, people were living there, you know, and I think this predates everybody here, but back in the day, it was being used to store newspaper. It was literally packed from floor to ceiling with newspaper that they were trying to recycle from, the guy was taking it from Hartford and piling it to the ceiling.
I bet there's no sprinklers in there.
No, no, there was nothing. It was like, there weren't even windows.
Good fire.
So essentially that language around quarterly is basically saying, as frequently as quarterly?
It's, I think it's at the, it puts it at the discretion of the building commissioner.
So it's not like we're gonna be spending all of our weekends there, but neither are we gonna only ever be in there once a year, because sometimes there are reasons to be in there.
Right, because businesses move out, you know, and then there's a new one, so they're, you know, they're... And, and, you know, I see all the business licenses come through, because I have to sign off with them, with Barbara. So, you know, I, I'm aware of some of that movement, but sometimes they may not have a business license, as she said. So I may not be aware of them, but, you know, I'm getting a fairly good handle on what's going on, but yeah, things change pretty fast sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. So there is one other thing that we added that, I don't know, I mean, you might have seen, but we never really discussed. And so that is the unsafe and condemned building piece, which basically adds an additional condemned building fee of $500 per year. So if that building, let's just say there might be one, you know, close to our proximity.
Yonder.
If that, you know, was on the registry and it was deemed condemned, then they would be levied an additional $500 a year charge. It doesn't take a genius to figure out the rationale for that.
Sure.
We don't want condemned buildings on our main streets. And if they are condemned, we want them fixed as soon as possible, so we wanted to...
Are you referring to this one sitting over here? It's been sitting here since, I'm, 2008.
Since forever?
Yeah. Spending that shit.
Yeah. So basically, yeah. And, and there's also others, I don't know if the, you know, the one on the corner of Main and Union is condemned. I think it probably could be potentially, I don't know if anybody's set foot in there in a decade.
It seems like it might be pretty damp inside.
Right, right.
So I mean, you know, there are some, some properties that could potentially fall under this umbrella. And our goal for adding that section was to try to push those out of the umbrella into the light. Jeff?
One thing that, I forget if it came up at EDIC, it's come up somewhere, but just, I didn't... I forget if it came up at EDIC, it's come up somewhere, but just, I didn't. If we, if it's clear here, the planning department would be willing to help.
Okay.
Especially with the more, some of the more administrative stuff, we can play a supportive role. Whereas you have, you have powers that planner doesn't have, so in terms of authority, you would be the enforcement mechanism. But one thing that did occur, I think, to, I forget where I, I forget where this came up, but. The variety of, uh, waiver requests.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Might be, that might be conversations and information that we would have to gather and review. Or you would have, I mean, there'd be.
To give them a variance or whatever.
Yeah, and I think like the building close by here is probably a good example.
Yeah.
Where there were a period of years that nothing's happened, so right, they'd be subject to. Possible enforcement, then they went through permitting process, processes. Uh, that's where it's gonna get tricky in terms of, well, we couldn't, we're, we're, we're in the process of doing X, Y, and Z.
Right.
I will just share, I guess, cause it's, it's intriguing, most recently. It was determined that there's a sewer line that goes actually from Payson to Union and goes under the building.
Really?
And so they were ready to demolish the structure. That was identified and that's the work we're seeing out there now, is they're moving sewer line into the easement area.
Interesting.
And then it should be moving forward, so things like that will be coming here, and I think that would be like tracking the law.
Somebody said, that sewer line, yeah, right there. Oh, there's a billy, ah!
Dred the needle.
Know the mystery of it.
Right.
Dred the needle.
That's what happens, it's like, it, it goes there, that's the easiest way through, who cares, there's a billy there.
But I think like if that clearinghouse, if that data gets sort of on the website, at least it'll be more transparent.
Yeah.
And someone who's carries, cause we always question like what's going on with that building.
Yeah.
It'll be there in like.
Some information will be there, it's something that's sort of.
There'll be a lot of the reasons.
Right.
That will probably justify what we put there and then there'll be some that won't.
Totally.
Alright, so.
So when we first started talking, first started talking, when you were magnificent and brought Arlington's economic. Development person to us to talk about their vacant storefront ordinance, Cassie. Her argument basically was, this was a great way to make people notice that we cared about the vitality of the. Businesses on these main thoroughfares and just getting their attention at all caused us to have more information than we'd ever had. The point is to get them even just a little bit annoyed with the fact that we're charging them a fee for anything. And get them in our office to have a conversation and those conversations have been very productive and they've meant that they've got different and better relationships with people. Who are trying to.
Oh, lucky things people are. So, I have to say.
I think our issue, we don't have any issues from the EDIC's perspective. It's not, we're not here to raise money and Arlington's perspective was, this is, this is a money losing effort and it is worth it for. What we have been able to affect change in and the, the activity within storefronts on these main thoroughfares. And the, the idea of waivers having a lot of different reasons, sure, fine, as long as we have a conversation at all.
Um, so I think that this, Jeff, that brings up a really good point. That we should potentially have another clause under waivers. That would be, and what I put in is G, um, waivers, uh, for issues related to the reuses of the property. Because if the per, if the people are in the process of going through a special permit. If they're in the process of, you know, construction, like, that should be, that's a reasonable.
Yep.
Like, let's just say, um, you know, the, the old shark tank tattoo. Let's say a restaurant wanted to go in there, well, it's gonna take some time to do the build out. We don't necessarily wanna penalize them, charging them this money if they're trying to do the build out, so.
Could say that if you're in an active permitting process.
Yep.
Meaning you, you can't be thinking about it, but you've got paperwork submitted to one or more departments within the city. And it's an active process that you're applying for that, that you would not apply any.
Yep.
Or.
Totally.
Um, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna like word smith that, like, like really basic and then I'll go back and. Put the, a little bit more legalese sounding stuff, but for the, but what I'm gonna do. And what, and I think what I'll do is I'll split the responsi- I'll share the responsibility between the building commissioner and the planning department. Because that might make sense as if there's an active special permit. That way you can talk to each other.
Connection with us.
Right? Does that make sense?
Better at that anyways, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm slowly getting it better. It's on the list.
Oh, Tom, yay! No, this is good, we're, we're actually, we're, we're in a really good place right now.
Okay.
So. That's no problem, don't worry about it. Life happens, life happens.
Good work.
Um, and so I'll just say, uh, some sort of, I'll, I'll put some words in there about an active process of, you know, um. Uh, permitting or a, a, a current build out, something like that, of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then what I'll do is I will. Uh, I will finalize all this wording and then I'll get it out to everybody so everybody can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Um. So what we're, where we're at is where we've pretty much got enforcement dialed in.
Really?
Yes.
Great.
And, and we have kind of a process for that.
Okay.
So what we have to deliver, once this passes, is, um, you know, a, a, a complete Google spreadsheet. That can just be uploaded to the website. We've talked about having, making sure the website has its own page for vacant storefronts in East Hampton where. Um, you could apply, like, where you could like do a change of status, so if you're a business owner, you could say, hey, my storefront's gonna be vacant, just letting you know. Or you could apply for a waiver. We just got to a point where we're gonna say that a waiver could also be requested for. In addition to the other reasons, financial hardship, doing a community benefit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if they're in the active, um, permitting process for that property or active build out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so.
I mean, at that point, it's not really vacant, it's.
Right.
Being renovated, like, what do you wanna do?
Right, but it's just not occupied, so. Um, okay, cool. Ah, that's great, um, and so, uh, so there's a couple of other things that I had put in here, um, which was, and, and maybe the. Brains in the room can help figure this out, cause I said, when we talked about registration. Uh, one of the notes that I put in is that I think we need to add a provision here if the property is owned by an LLC or a holding company. Um, and I don't know if we do, and that, that's under, like, talking about, we need the owner's name, we need the owner's address, we need the owner's phone number. But if it's not owned by a singular entity, if it's owned by a trust. If it's owned by an LLC that doesn't necessarily have one person as the figurehead. And there's a good chance we'll have a property manager.
Contact.
Or some sort of contact.
Some type of contact individual, that's what, whether it's LLC or, or any kind of corp. You know, they've got somebody who's at that point.
Right, and so do you think, so I, I think that that was just a question that I had, I had written down as like. We need to be aware of this, I don't know if it's something we need to add into the ordinance. If all of those things have one conduit, one contact person that would be listed with the city, then it's a moot point.
Right.
Right? Um, and.
Doesn't the registration form contain name, contact person?
It does, it does, yeah. And what I was thinking is like someone who doesn't register. Like, and we're like, we need to track these people down, but it's owned by a, a trust.
Right, yeah.
And we're like, okay, well, this is this trust, but there's nobody listed as like.
Trying to find a number.
Or it's a lawyer.
Trying to find it, right.
What do you think, Jeff?
Well, this is a good, good part of it, I, I mean, that's where I was thinking about at somewhere the certified letter. And then the connection for me was that I wrote tax bills, so.
Right.
You know, the most recent, you know, information on the assessor's records is where we go to send our tax bills.
Right.
That's who the mailing went to, it's the assessor's database.
Like the cleanest, because those people we.
Cause who's paying taxes should know.
Right, and so that would get to the same people, at least by certified mail. And that might be overkill, but at least as a guaranteed way to know that we got it to those people and put them on notice, especially if we're receiving complaint. And that, that's what we talked about, if we might receive a complaint, then. Either the building department or the planning department or both of us somehow would. Write a certified letter to that owner to say this has been identified as day one of a vacant, of their vacancy. Um, but I think the assessor's records would be a good reference point there.
Yeah.
Uh, councillor I.
So, uh, this is for either of you, maybe if you know the answer, um. So, assuming, right, like we have an LLC and let, let's say, for example, it's the chief financial officer. Of an organization, would we be able to. Legally send fees approved to that person or?
We could do it, attention to that person, you're gonna have to do it to whatever.
Right, and then they would just have to process it through the company, right?
Yep.
Okay, and there's precedence for doing that?
Yes.
Okay, right, cool.
And, and so.
Call out that, you know, in any like a notice violation, I call out if there's an LLC and then appoint contact person that I've been working with. I'll reference both.
So basically what I just did was I added, I said, um, registration. Prior to or not more than ninety days after a unit or any portion of a property becomes vacant as defined here in the owners, as listed in the assessor's office. Should I say the assessor's office or the assessor's?
Database?
Database, the assessor's.
Vision is called.
Vision card.
Let's put it in for now and then we can, we, I, we can talk, I, I.
Because the, the assessor's card doesn't necessarily have, uh, it doesn't have phone numbers.
Right.
Right.
It would have an address that may or may not. Go somewhere.
Right, right, but it would have the owner or whoever the owner group is listed.
It'll have, yeah, it'll have the LLC or whoever, yeah, whoever has purchased or has deed to that.
Okay, perfect, so I'm gonna say as listed, um. I'll figure this out. It's listed in the assessor's office, must register the vacancy with the city. Okay, um, let's see, is. I mean, there was a couple of other things, for example, and this was, and this is just to. Talk, so one of the, the, the things we had discussed as far as waivers was, um, the art piece. And we thought, well, are there any other things that could potentially be beneficial to the city that could, would qualify that maybe aren't art? Like maybe, uh, letting, um, a blood drive or, or a vaccine clinic or like, uh, like, and so. We, we put in, or use of the property for some other public good. And that was just an idea because we're like, oh, there could be some potential things, but we didn't really expand on that a lot and, and it might just be, it might muddy the water. But I just figured I'd put it out there, just to see what people thought, because this is one of the things where I can just press a button and it'll go away.
Doesn't that basically require an inspection to always happen because you're gonna have people in the building?
Yeah, and it, and it depends on the use, again, like if someone goes into there and this building isn't set up for that use. They can't just do it.
Alright, so how about this? How about I press this little X? And that disappears.
It was a good idea.
Hey, hey, listen, we had lots of good ideas, whether they're feasible or not, it's, you know.
I think we can offer a little more backup to, on that too, so I had a conversation with Pasulina, who's the arts coordinator and. She, she was a little hesitant about the, the art display, but overall thought it would be manageable.
Okay.
What, what she didn't, she was confused, cause she jumped right to like, well, if we're gonna do like a pop-up or like open up the space. She, she definitely expressed a lot of reservation about that because what I think in her experience. It, what it really takes is a super cooperative landlord.
Right.
To have the relationship, to build out, to build the trust and to have all the conversations that go into like, okay, from five to nine on Friday nights, we're gonna open this up to the public. And she, she was kinda like, well, if you're going down this road and you can't get the landlord to do anything, the likelihood of. Getting their cooperation to invite the people in the space is gonna be very minimal.
And it mudslideed to something else that wasn't, you know, allowed or, uh, a good example, not here in the city of. East Hampton, but in the city of North Hampton, if you drive out of town on. Uh, Pleasant, where Robert is, Robert.
Oh, the little, the art place that's old mechanic shop or something. Yeah.
No permits there.
Oh, interesting.
And then everything pops up there.
Councillor P.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, if I remember correctly, the whole idea with this is that that whole sort of thing is like at the discretion of. The arts community, so it's like, if they don't, if, if they don't think that someone's idea is gonna work, they can just say no.
Right.
I mean, they need to say no every time.
Uh, I mean, well, and, and I think what, what Jeff says is, is.
Yeah.
Like, does it make sense? Because when you do invite people in the space, you, you invite people to use the bathrooms and to like. You know, the potential damage to the space and if the person's actively trying to lease it, then that could be, so I think, you know, having the window-based. Display is simple, easy, it's, we know it's, it's been done.
In the building.
And it beautifies the, the, you know, blight, so.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think if there is, um.
Excuse me, were you gonna keep the Harvard, the person has to post their information outside the building?
Um, so, it's, it's funny, I'm right there. It says. The owner must display in prominent location on the building, the owner's name, telephone number, at which they can be contacted in an email address. Such notice must be displayed in such manner that will be not subject by degradation of the elements. And we said, uh, this, we added something to the next piece, which is the owner may include advertising materials in the vacant space or displayed. In the property's street-facing windows, such advertising materials must be in accordance with the sign ordinance of the East Hampton zoning ordinance.
Great.
So we just like popped that in, um.
The shame factor.
Yeah. Uh, and, and then we said, there's like, so I'm, I'm just going through some of the things that we had added in addition to what you all had put together. Um, if, so this is under violations, penalties, and enforcement. If a lien is placed on the property, the city will work with the tax collectors to remove such a lien if it is determined the violations have been addressed. So that piece wasn't in there, so we wanted to make sure that if the person was making good faith effort.
Yes.
And they had a lien that we would be able to get that lien removed.
Cool.
So, um, and let me see if there was anything else, um, yeah, so the condemned, went over the condemned, that was Tom's idea. The extra, and that's, and that's honestly, that's really. That's it. Um, you know, other than the increased fees. Um, which, you know, I, I, like, we went back and forth with it, but we felt like tho- those fees were similar to other cities' fees.
Yeah.
And we felt like it would, it would garner some attention.
Yeah.
And, you know, cause like a hundred bucks for a landowner, whatever.
Yeah.
But five hundred, that's gonna go up to a thousand, that's gonna be reoccurring, is, you know, a little bit more significant.
Yeah.
So, yeah, Jeff?
In terms of, I think we talked about this at the EDIC, but I think in terms of. When the city council's holding the public hearing, I think just recalling that. If I were a landowner, my concerns would be, um, that this immediately takes effect, right? So we talked about the first three months, if not in effect, and there are multiple ways that they can get a waiver. Especially for things like permitting or actively, um, engaged in processes, I think, I think that will. Click with a fair number of property owners.
Mm-hmm.
There will probably be the few who will come out and just eject to the nature of this anyway. But it is kind of pretty, it's not immediate, and I think that would be the messaging you wanna.
Yeah.
Have for the city council public hearings.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
There'll be, there'll be an adjustment time.
Right.
Right, and there's, I think that, I think there's a lot of discussion that have been on the practical nature of trying to replace the space.
Mm-hmm.
So, so those are gonna be really important, I think it's, it's really the flagrant people who, for whatever reason. Like the storefronts are just still vacant and it's just because.
For years on end.
Like excessively in a short period of time. And, and we, this was one more point where. The, the types of information we get, you know, can we ask for more information? So one of the questions I kind of just. For myself was. If someone says they're actively seeking tenants, like can we ask for where are they advertising or how much are they? Cause I, I, I wonder that there are private lenders who are not really actively, there are some places that have no full rent signs on them.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I don't know if you looked online, if you would find any listing of the properties being available.
True.
So like that wouldn't pass like the test that someone's actively trying to get tenants in there too.
We talked about the idea of how, how much do you poke your nose into a private business's operations and go, oh, but how hard are you trying?
Right.
Tell us everything.
Right.
Um, and there's an element of sort of hoping in this process, probably. Beyond the early adjustment period where you've established that the goal of this is not to punish anybody, the goal of this is to ensure that downtown is a. Vital place and the city would like to help you find tenants for these spaces. And we have some ideas for ways you could do that, so if we can make it publicly available information, like. What the rent is, what the square footage is of this space, maybe that's useful to people who are looking and also. If you tell us that you're looking only in these places, maybe we can recommend some other places.
Yeah, mm-hmm. I think that's good, I, and I think the promotion of it. We made a zoning change in the middle of the pandemic, which basically looked in the downtown business district and said, if you're not adding. Uh, any additions, you're not adding floor area or anything to your building, you can change uses without going to planning board. And there are no permitting requirements from the land use perspective. So that's an incentive for a landlord who's trying to get tenants, like they have kind of.[1768.84] So, that's an incentive for a landlord who's trying to get tenants, that they have kind of.
But you, you just violated the state building code by that statement, right? Because if you change a use that was once established in that building, now you're doing a different use?
Yeah.
You have to put in a change of use through the building code.
Building code, yes, just zoning, sorry.
But I, but when they read that, they're gonna think they don't have to do anything.
Well, yeah, no, you're, you're right, it's, it's in the zoning code, so we, we eliminated the special permit requirement.
Right.
Or plan approval, because we found.
It's just how people interpret it, it's just how people interpret it, but.
We'll, we'll make sure.
Zoning, yeah.
At least we relaxed the zoning requirement.
So Jeff, I'm gonna add a little component to that, um, where I was talking about waivers.
It happens.
For the commissioner and the planning department, um, about information regarding to the use of the, of the building and the efforts to reuse the building.
Sure.
Um, shall be readily given, so I'm gonna, that's not how it's gonna be, but that's what I, that's the note I wrote to myself.
I think if it's an option to collaborate and.
Right, no, and I think when new businesses go in, you know, like I said, they, a lot of them get the business license through Barbara, then I see it and then I can, you know, it gives me a heads up, so.
Um, and, and I will word, I will wordsmith that, cause, you know, I sit on the couch most of the day, so I have, give me something to do.
When this law goes into a, the, excuse me, ordinance goes into effect, say June first, will all the properties in East Hampton be on equal footing for day zero, day one?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep, and I think that day, that day zero would be the day where those letters would go out, move, maybe someone on the senior, the work program, um, could.
So we would say we're now initiating this.
We're now initiating, no, so here, here's the welcome letter. So your property has been identified as a vacant property and this, uh, the ordinance is passed, here's the ordinance. You know, in plain English, you know, you, um, have ninety days to register your property. If you don't, here's what could happen, you know, it's a fine, um, and if you, if you're not doing A, B, or C, then it's gonna cost five hundred dollars to get on the registry, which will give you these benefits, will be on the city's website for people that are looking to open a business in East Hampton. You know, so that letter will get out, get sent out day zero, and they'll have to respond to it, um, you know, uh, with that information. And that, that will start the clock, basically, I think.
And it gets some free advertisement by seeing, having that database on the website for people to look at.
Yeah.
Good, right?
Yeah, and then we can have like a little banner on the website that's like, properties in East Hampton for lease.
Yeah, you have a picture of it maybe, or, or something, you could really entice them by going, oh, that might be a good idea, right?
I mean, I get emails like once a year from people being like, hey, we wanna start a business, do you know any good place to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, like.
I get the same ones.
I guess, but I don't know.
Yeah, but, but who do we contact, and like, how does, how, is it even for lease, is it even for, like, you know, like that kind of stuff, so.
This might help solve problems that have been in place.
Yeah, exactly, and I think that's the whole point, is like, um, the, the problem has been identified, it's real. And, but if we can find a solution that is, um, beneficial to the community.
Yeah.
Uh, through this ordinance, I mean, that's one of the cool things about ordinances, and then, and here's the other thing, if we find that this is a train wreck and it just isn't working, that's the other beauty of ordinances, you, they can be modified, they can be changed, they can be revoked, you know? So, if, if we do find that it is untenable, then we go back to the drawing board, you know, so, and, um, uh, does anybody else have any thoughts, questions, comments?
I just wanna say, um, that I really appreciate all the hard work that everybody's put into this.
Great.
This is, you know, my first crack at ordinance-related stuff being on this committee, and um, there's a lot of thoughtfulness, a lot of specific language concepts, so it's, it's really well done.
Yeah, I think, I think this is, this is good, so here's what I'll do. I will, uh, tomorrow I'll wordsmith this, and I'll share it to the stakeholders. Um, we won't have any deliberation over email, but it doesn't mean you can't say, hey, you missed a comma here. Um, and then what we'll do is, um, Omar is gonna say, yes, Sam, you can send it to the attorney.
Please say that, please say that.
And, and so.
That's what I was gonna contact you about.
Yeah, so it, it is important to, to make sure that we get this reviewed, and, um, and then what I'll do is I'll set a public hearing for it. And, uh, it'll go to the full council. Um, after we say, we think that should happen. And, um, and I feel like, do you, Brad and Tom, I'm, I'm of two minds, I feel like we could say, hey, we feel good about this, we've worked on this for a while, we could, you know, with the revisions that are gonna happen, the wordsmithing, we feel good about this going to the full council. Or, we can wait until I wordsmith it, and we could send it to the full council at our next meeting. Um, I'm, uh, uh.
For me saying yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you like, a few things.
Okay.
You're gonna send that email tomorrow?
Yes.
Or as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
I'm gonna put it in that spot.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you did.
We'll see how, I might, I might, I might roll out of, off the couch, who knows?
So you will send it, what about if some of the councilors have a different idea and they add a lot of stuff, so should I, you, we, we're expecting that, so then when I, I take it, no, send it to the city's district yet?
And send it to the full council for people to like, share their ideas.
Or, no, but I would, no, I prefer the committee. After the committee decide, yes, this is the, the language that we're gonna present to the council, I will say yes to send it to the city's.
Okay.
But I need the committee to say yes first to that language.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I will, I will do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Should, should we then just get that draft and then we can just meet and, like, after Thanksgiving and just take a quick.
Let's do that then, maybe. Well, then we'll have at least a finished product, so, so, yeah.
Just to make sure.
Yeah, because I don't want that we change, we have a lot of words and then, uh, while we send to the city's district, it's gonna be something different, then it's gonna be a.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine, and so that just puts us out like two weeks.
Okay.
Um, and, and so what I'll, like, again, this process, uh, I, I'll still send this out as soon as, as soon as I can, excuse me, and, um, we'll, at our next meeting, we'll take a look, make sure we're good. Then we'll send it to the attorney, then we'll set the public hearing, and we'll go forward. All right, awesome, so thank you.
What do you expect the public hearing reaction to be?
Yes, no problem.
It'll be interesting, I mean, I think most people, uh, thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate you coming.
Yep, thank you guys, good luck.
Yeah, take care. Um, you know, I think, um, most people will probably be receptive to it, is, is my thought is, because anytime I mention this to people, they're like, oh my god, yeah, there's so many vacant buildings. I think the, the small percentage of people that would be adamantly against it are the small percentage of people that may own a building that's empty, you know?
And they're welcome to share their thoughts, but I mean, these things tend to be pretty low-key.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's, yeah, I don't think it's gonna fill the upstairs chamber or anything.
Okay, cool.
Not like some of our other things. So, uh, thank you, uh, for coming so many times, thank you for all your resources, we appreciate it, no, it's like, really good.
Thanks for having us.
And we have a list of vacant storefronts.
I know, so we're gonna have to, we'll have to get that together.
It should, it should be longer.
So before you, before you all head out, I didn't get your name and I didn't officially introduce myself.
I'm sorry. I'm Cassie Eckhoff.
Okay. Councilor Riley.
Hey, Councilor Riley, nice to meet you.
Gwen just knows everybody.
I know a lot of people, it's true. All right.
Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All done, bye then.
Thank you.
All right, well, it should stay then, balance our energy.
Thanks, gotta go. Gotta go.
Okay, all right, see ya.
Bye, thank you.
All right, hey Jeff, thank you so much, appreciate it, uh, your contributions are always appreciated, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, um, so, uh, we have one other thing, which is plastics.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, and I do wanna kind of move on that. Um, and the reason I wanna move on that is because we didn't set the meeting for our first December meeting, or we didn't set the public hearing for the first December meeting, but I would like to second, like, really, I can talk. I would like to set it for the second meeting. Um, and so, and here, let me just, uh, I think, let me just see if I can, cause here's what, here, let me give you, let me catch you guys up. So for plastics. There's a couple problematic sections, the pieces with the composting, were you with us when we did that?
I was.
And we had that, the person come in and they were like, you have to increase your composting requirements and like, and, and so, and we did, and that ended up being a mistake because it is causing, um, turmoil within our wonderful little, um, business community. So, basically, um, what we have here is we have some sections that we're gonna strike.
Okay.
The ordinance is already passed, we're gonna go back in and we're gonna, we're gonna amend it. There's reasoning, like, we worked hard to pass that ordinance, there's some really beneficial things in there.
Right.
We don't wanna throw, it's a terrible expression, I, I feel like I should make another one, you know, it's like, you know, the, the throw the baby out with the bathwater, there's gotta be a better way to say that. Right, like, cause, um, you know, like, throw the rotten orange out with like the good oranges, I don't know, like.
Don't throw produce out with the compost.
The compost, there you go. Um, and so, let me just, uh, so here we have, this is what it is. Striking section six dash two one dot two one, two, compostable plastic bags and renumber it. Um, strike six dash two one dot two two in its entirety, and then strike six dash two one dot two four, dis- disposable food service ware, and it goes into all the eight STM stuff, and then, um, strike the six dash two one dot two five, um, the delivery of newspapers or other periodic, periodicals has to be compostable. Now, um, those are the only things we really, that have been identified as issues. So if we go back in and we dissect those out, I think we should be in a good place. And then what, we don't have to start from square one.
Right.
How does that feel to you gentlemen?
So, so just to, the, the sole issue is that the sort of industrial composting we're talking about here, there's not.
There's, there was, there was one in South Deerfield, I don't know, since COVID, I don't know its status.
Right.
But it seems like people are having a, like, difficult time accessing the material and then the end source. So, like, that's, that's, it seems to be what the issue is.
Right. Well, I mean, if that's the case, then.
I mean, we can always go back, if we find, you know, once, once we dissect these and we find that, oh wait, actually there is some solution here, we can go back in and add whatever that solution is.
I guess that makes enough sense that we can, I mean, there's, we can't enforce this, we can't, we don't actually have a, an answer for it, so. Uh, I haven't independently looked into materials procurement.
Neither have I.
But, um, that, but that does seem to be the consensus, that there's just not.
That it's, I mean, that's, that's the, the feedback we were getting was that it just, there wasn't the materials out there through the vendors that met this eight STM D six four zero zero. It just wasn't, they, they weren't there.
Huh, well, this is funny, but.
Yeah. Well, and I think the other piece was that without the industrial composting, that those actually degrade slower than other types of recyclable materials.
Right.
And so it ended up like not being in that game.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's, you know, so that is basically what is proposed, and, and that, so I had talked to, you know, since Councilor Zaret was the like the person who added the, like, he was, this piece was basically his.
Yeah.
And he felt okay with that, and so, um, what got submitted to the full council for us to discuss was, you know, removing these pieces, originally, it was gonna be to remove the whole ordinance. But I said, we have some good pieces in here that we've worked really hard for, let's keep those.
Right.
Let's just take out the parts that aren't working.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, Councilor Riley, how do you feel about that?
I, I think that's fine, I mean, listen, there, the intent was there, but, you know, supply chain issues are what they are. Um, and it's not something that we can control or that the business owners can control, so, you know, maybe, maybe in the future we can revisit it if we feel that it's necessary when when the, uh, kind of global economy straightens itself out, but for right now, there's no point in enforcing, uh, an ordinance or a section of an ordinance on our businesses when it is out of their control.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I, I just wanna say two things about this, if you, I didn't cut, did I cut you off?
Oh, no, I'm done, yeah.
It's all for.
So, the first one is, I think that, and, and I say this as a person who was on the committee at the time, so I'm not pointing any fingers, and I'm not also pointing at myself. I, we need to take this sort of thing as a, as a learning experience, because, like, you know, people have their perspectives, they have their things, I think that actually what we did with this vacant storefront thing is a good example of how we need to be approaching this thing forward, where we actually look at the individual components and say, okay, but this, how do you actually do this? How is this actually done? And really get deep into that process, even if there's a desire to, to see something move through quickly, because this sort of thing, it's not an incredible look for the council. Um, so that, that's my first point, my second point is, I will totally vote tonight to, to, um, strip this, but I, I do actually think that in the spirit of that, I actually think I do need to, we all probably should do a little bit of research between now and the public hearing and verify that this is the exact thing, because otherwise we are doing the exact thing that got us in here, which is an exterior party coming in and saying, no, it needs to be changed to this, and us saying like, okay, like, I, I think that we, I, I mean, and perhaps somebody else has already done this, would like to verify this actually. Because I, I just, I do, I do think like we need to be more in the habit of verifying facts before we make ordinances based on them, and so I think like, based on the information that we have now, I'm fine to make that recommendation, but I do think it's important that we do some research, perhaps consult some of the folks who advocated for this and see if there's something being missed here, because I wouldn't want to strip these sections out if in fact there's a big misunderstanding, that doesn't sound like what's happening.
Right.
But I do think we need to be thorough about this stuff.
I, I think that is well said, Councilor, and, and I'll, I'll, as the chair at the time, I will take the responsibility for that, um, and, you know, and the, the rationale is innocent, which is, we were presented with this scientific information that with, in volumes of
Yeah, and it made us nervous.
of material, and we're like, oh, this makes, we had the, the expert come in and tell, and it's, and, and that I agree, there is like this kind of like comfort in, um, in this documentation, like, oh, we're doing the right thing, because it's you know, all this information is being pushed at us, and we're being pushed down this road, but I think it does you know, make the point of, it's important for us to step back, say, and, and this is my, part of, part, again, this is my fault, but to say, how are we gonna implement this, how is this gonna affect the parties? And how can we make sure that we don't have to go back and change it later, if at all avoidable, you know? So I, I appreciate that, and, and I will take that responsibility, so thanks for bringing that up.
Take a third of it, you know? I was there too.
Uh, and so, I guess I would entertain a motion to strike, uh, these, uh, four sections. Um, six dash two one dot two one, six dash two one dot two two, six dash two one dot two four, and six dash two one dot two five.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will move that to the full council.
Do you have second, because he says move, but who's second?
I think, did I second it?
I will officially second it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a second. So what I'll do is I'll set the public hearing for the second meeting in December.
Okay.
And, um, yeah, in between, we should do a little research.
Yeah. I wanna be mindful of the timeline, but it would be very embarrassing if we twice didn't, so.
Well, my leg is starting to feel strange, so I think it might make sense for us to, uh, get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So I can get some blood back into my.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you very much, gentlemen.